All right, well, we are going to go ahead and get started. I don't know, is who's on, what city council staff is on right now?
Susan.
Susan, did TJ or Lindsay say they were coming?
Lindsay, I didn't hear back from TJ. Lindsay was coming right away, was supposed to be on right away because she has another meeting she has to log into. But, so I don't.
I'm not sure. I sent them both an email this morning.
Yeah, I know she responded twice that she was coming but had to leave.
Early.
Early, so I'm gonna try, I'll try giving her a call.
All right, well, if she joins, we'll just pass the meeting back to her.
Okay.
I don't wanna hold everybody's time up, um, so we'll go get ahead and get started. With Tim's team, so Tim. You can just jump in and give us update. I kinda wanted to start it where we left off last time with the nonprofits and the economic. ARPA. Yeah, what was it called, the economic?
We have an update ready, counselor, on the programs that my team's administering, so why don't we just start with that? That'll walk us through each one of the categories.
Okay, did you want to use the screen?
Yes, if we could, that'd be great.
Susan, I think you have to do that. Do you, okay.
Sure, um, so just to kind of, what we did was, we tried to condense this a little bit, just to make it easier to follow for folks.
Make it a little bit bigger, Tina.
I can try.
Good, counselor.
That better? Okay, so I'll, I'll kinda actually start just at the back end of the report. Sort of, this is the, some of the data that backs it up. This is kind of what you all are used to seeing. Each of the individual awardees are on here with their demographic information and the QCT information and the award amount. And then just to walk folks through the chart, so we have three hundred and eight total awards across the nonprofit business and the business assistance programs. Of those, two hundred and six businesses were our, the awardees. There are two hundred and one disproportionately impacted businesses that got funding. A hundred and fifty-four businesses operating in qualified census tracts, a hundred and seventy-four minority-owned businesses, seventy-eight women-owned businesses, and five veteran-owned businesses. This second.
For the disproportionately impacted number, is that inclusive of like QTC?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's, it's sort of following the treasury's definition of disproportionately impacted and including the city's definition, including minority and businesses. The second chart looks at the actual funding that's been awarded. So, you know, this is the total amount awarded to folks. And then this number is the amount awarded to businesses across the programs because you all didn't want us just looking at specific programs. So this kind of breaks that down again by the different categories.
Just to be clear, counselor, so that's sixty-eight million, three hundred and eleven. That is only the programs that we're administering. So that's not total ARPA.
So right, it doesn't include the revenue loss, it doesn't include that kind of stuff. Then, the, the second chart is the nonprofits. So it gives you again out of the awards, how many nonprofits got awarded, how many of those are in qualified census tracts and how many, and how much of the dollars went to nonprofits and qualified census tracts. And then, we gave you the breakdown by program to show where we are with each program. So for small business assistance, we had, just to give you an example, I, I don't know if you want me to go through each one, but small business assistance, we had three hundred and seventeen applications total. We have zero applications ready that need to be reviewed. There are two applications that are ready to go to the advisory committee, and we've made a hundred and forty-two total awards, and this is the total dollar amount that's been awarded.
Goes pretty quickly, let's just.
Just go through them all?
Yeah.
Um, for new business assistance, we had a hundred and eighty-five total applications. We have six of those that still need to be reviewed. There are currently zero waiting for the advisory committee, forty have received awards. And this one point two million is the total dollar amount that's been awarded to those businesses. For nonprofit assistance, we had a hundred and forty-three applications. There are six remaining to be reviewed. There are four that are ready to go to the advisory committee, seventy-four awards, and about fourteen million dollars has been awarded.
The six to be reviewed, it's my understanding, those are second requests.
The vast majority, I think there's one first request left, or two.
What does second request mean? Like, they already got funded, or they resubmitted application?
Somebody's come back, and they've already gotten funded on one round, counselor, and they've come back with an additional request. Any second request, we've pushed back to the very end until we got through all the first requests.
And the fir-, the second.
The second request, um, is that? Hold on. Second request, so they already got awarded and they put in another request? Is that open to every applicant? Like, if they got awarded, they can put in a second request?
My understanding was, because, you know, this was sort of a pre-standing thing when we took over the program, that was, yeah, as soon, they could, there was no limit on how many requests folks could put in. They just had to be in before the deadline.
Well, these second requests came in, in January?
In, in December, or sometime, like, a lot of them came in in that, those last few months.
Well, there's not a lot of them.
No, no, there's probably like ten.
Ten second requests?
About that, approximately.
Send those to, to, to us, um, so we can see what organizations are looking for additional funding?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Um, can you send the second request applications to us so we can see what organizations are looking for additional funding and, and why, kind of?
Do you want the, do you want the application, counselor, or is it sufficient?
First, I just want the name and what they're looking for, like, maybe what they got in the first request, and what it was for, and then the second request one.
Sure, we can get that for you.
Thank you. Okay, build back.
Build back, there were eight total applications received, there's one remaining to be reviewed. Six of those were awarded, and there, that total dollar amount is seven and a half million.
Okay.
Yep, for housing, so there were, for the exterior repair program, there were a hundred and fifty-eight applications received. There are zero remaining to be reviewed, there's sixty-two that are in the inspection phase, and forty-one that have been awarded, and so far, that dollar amount is eight hundred and eighteen thousand. For healthy homes, there were a hundred and seventy-eight applications received, there are zero remaining to be reviewed. There are thirty-six currently in the inspection phase, and nineteen that have been awarded so far. That dollar amount that's been awarded to date is the one point six million. And then for the neighborhood economic recovery fund, there were thirty-nine applications received total. There are zero that need to be reviewed, there are eight that are still in the project development phase, and then seventeen that have been awarded to date, and that dollar amount is eight point six million.
Do you send us this, um, report along with the data that, that's behind it? Yeah, with all that, um, and then, did you mention senior applications, or that's not your department?
Yeah, we don't, I don't have that data to be able to share. I think that's TJ and Lindsay Shaw.
Is Lindsay on? Any questions, um, from counselors on this data? Or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if I'm, I'm reading it wrong, but, but are there a lot of applications that were rejected? Because it seems that from the, the amount that applied and the amount awarded are, there's, there's a difference. Are there a lot more to be reviewed, or is this it? Is this the end of it?
Most, most of the reviews, counselor, have been done. There is a high degree of rejections in terms of applications not being qualified. Especially with regards to the new business.
Scroll down to new business numbers.
Yep. I should also say, there was a, a fairly large number of applicants that we went back to to try to get supporting information from, to support their applications, and we did have a high level of just non-responsiveness to those requests.
So we did a, a survey, uh, in, in terms of going back to the new businesses. And at that point, there was a, a, a not, there was a number of them that just didn't respond with additional information. And, you know, it, it, just keep in mind, counselors, with the new business category, there were a lot of folks that just applied, that basically didn't have a business, but they had an idea.
Well, I, I, I'd just be curious, um, because I haven't really attended any of these meetings before. For example, veterans-owned businesses. Were there a lot that were rejected?
No, we honestly, I will say, across all the programs, we didn't see a lot of veteran-owned business applications coming in.
Okay, and, and do, do you identify which ones got the awards by name?
That would be, that's listed in this data chart, so.
Okay, well, it is early Monday morning, so I haven't looked at the whole chart. How about, uh, women-owned businesses, the same thing?
Yeah, there, there are a lot of folks also across applications that, you know, they didn't fill out a lot of the information, they didn't check boxes, like, there, there was a, a large amount of non-responsiveness. We tried to go back to folks and get as much information as possible to try to get their applications to the point where it could be reviewed.
Do you think many people had a language barrier?
Honestly, I, that's, we were taking applications in Spanish and getting them translated, and there were applications available in Spanish. So that hasn't been as much of an issue, I don't think. We also have Spanish-speaking staff, uh, as part of this project, who have been part of the follow-up calls, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wash. Um, Councilor Letterman, before I get to you, I have a couple of questions. So here's the way that I wanna see some of the data. I do wanna see it broken down by neighborhoods, like you got the boxes for each program, um, if we can get that broken down by neighborhoods, and I wanna see the race spiked out specifically, so I wanna know if they're African-American, or Hispanic, or Asian, or white. Um, I would like to see that data, um, a little bit more drilled down into. Um, and then the other thing that I wanted to see is, um, does awarded mean the funds have been, um, released already? If it says awarded?
It does not necessarily mean it's been released already. It means that it's been announced, they've gotten an award letter, and, um, some of them, it's been contracted, and some of them, it has not.
Okay, so.
Status is here, so in this data breakdown chart where we talk about individual awards, it'll tell you if it's been awarded, or if the contract has been executed. And it also gives you the applicants, whether they're in a QCT or not, how much they requested, how much they were awarded, what, if they're, if it's a minority-owned business, and if so, what specific minority categories they marked in their application. Whether it's a woman-owned business, whether it's a veteran-owned business, and what neighborhood that, that business or nonprofit is in.
So if we could get the information drilled down by race, by, um, if it's women-owned, veteran-owned, disabled, in the neighborhoods, um, that's the data I wanna see, but then in addition, um, I would like to see when, how long it takes from the award process, and I was just gonna ask you guys, what is the process from when it's announced, whenever awarded, and they get the letter? What's the process from there until the funds are released to them?
Well, there's a contracting process, counselor, um, and that's really dictated by the applicant's, uh, ability to respond and provide the, the backup documentation necessary to go to contract. So, so that's, that's applicant-driven, um, so you can't necessarily put a timeline on that. It, it's dependent on the applicant.
They also have to be cleared by the city collector's office, treasurer collector, to make sure they don't owe any fees and fines. So before we go to contract, they have to pay off anything they owe the city, so a lot are being held up for that.
Okay, cuz, um, I, I don't know, I've just been getting some folks calling me saying, oh, they're giving me a hard time, they want this, they want that, and, um, so I'm, I'm about to set up interviews with some of the constituents that have been awarded and going through the contract phase, just to get an understanding on, I don't know what hard time means. Um, I don't know if it's just difficult for them to get the information, so I don't have that data for you all right now, but, I'm gonna try to start gathering it, cuz I don't really know what hard time means.
It might be helpful to you, counselor, in your discussion, uh, with your constituents, uh, at the, uh, backup, the documentation that's requested relative to contracting.
And we have previously sent that packet.
So that you can, you can see that.
Uh, so everyone gets the same packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Previously sent the small business version of that, um, happy to send along the new business and the nonprofit, but there's a lot of similarity there.
Okay, that'd be great, and then, does anyone work with them, um, on the packets once they get it?
Yes, they're assigned to a specific staff person, that staff person works with them, uh, on an individualized basis, uh, to, to assist them to the degree that they can in terms of getting through the, um, the contract.
And I will say, we have folks in here pretty, every day, all day, with staff trying to assist them through the packets. We have a staff person who is literally helping people set up their unique entity identifiers with the federal government at her computer here in the office.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and firstly, I, I share Counselor Whitfield's interest in seeing the, uh, total amount of contracts executed. So contract executed means the funds have been dispersed, is that correct?
No, contract executed means they have a signed contract, and they're, they have the ability to draw on the funding.
So the funding is available to them once the contract is executed, as long as they are submitting the, the proper paperwork to draw on it?
That's correct, right, sir.
Okay, so yeah, I share, I share Counselor Whitfield's interest in, in seeing those numbers, and then related to that, now that uh, such a large amount have been awarded, I'm wondering if you can speak to the compliance end in terms of, um, how we're doing with our operation to actually track what is being done and, and the various awardees' compliance with, uh, the terms upon which the funds were awarded?
I think that's best to, to deal with finance in terms of, uh, because the, the overall compliance for the program is being run out of finance.
And are they not here, Madam Chair?
They are.
Oh, they are, okay, are we going to them next?
Yes, Lindsay, yeah, we're going to them next.
All right, okay, that, I'll wait that, for that then, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, counselor. Um, Counselor Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a quick question, um, in terms of funds awarded, can we get a breakdown to see how many funds or what funds have been awarded for the businesses? Is that possible? I know you say, I, I know you say amount awarded, I guess I'm looking for, how, how much have they drawn? Yeah, how, how much have they drawn upon? All right, so if they've awarded seventy-five thousand, I wanna know how much of that seventy-five thousand have they used?
That, that would be a question for finance, counselor. They have it in the system in terms of the, the, the draws that are being done on the contracts.
So we're no longer dispersing like a set amount, is that what, is that what you're saying? We're no longer like dispersing half and, um?
That, that is, we, we had that conversation at the last meeting. Uh, so, there, there's a contract in place, and then we, we ultimately, in terms of the, the programs that we're managing, we approve the draw, and then the draw is made on the city system.
For one moment, cuz Lindsay does have to leave, and I would like to hear from her before she goes, and I'll, I'll circle right back to you all and your questions, but she only has a couple minutes.
Okay.
Sorry, um, Lindsay?
Good morning, yeah, sorry, I just have to leave for a ten o'clock, um, so I'm sure that you wanted to go over the ARPA budget, so I just wanted to be able to show it quickly, um, would you like me to share my screen?
Sure.
Sure, thanks. Okay. Um, so not too much has changed since the last time we reviewed the budget. The only thing that's changed is last time we talked about three million dollars in parks projects, but I don't have the details on any of that yet, and it hasn't been announced by the mayor like I thought it was. So I did take this off for now, so this is everything that's been announced up until now. Besides the parks, the only other change is the, the last thing here, the Springfield Higher Education ARPA Fund, um, for the seven hundred and fifty thousand that the mayor announced last week.
Where is the fourteen hundred dollar ones?
That, that's under households, so this is the ten million dollars that the mayor has so far allotted to households along with the, um, fee for PPL, the, um, professional services contract.
Okay, and how much is that contract again, Lindsay?
It's up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so ten million to go out to the households, when is that, um, five thousand, when applications have been reviewed, when is the funds gonna be deployed for that?
So they're wrapping up reviews, actually, um, they've been through, they've gotten through so many of them. There's been a little bit back and forth with our office, just for questions about some of the applications. So they're gonna be wrapping up reviews, and we hope to be mailing, uh, we hope to be, um, rolling out approval letters sooner rather than later. We, Tim and I actually have to nail down more of the timeline tomorrow at a meeting with them. But, as of right now, um, we're seeing late at the end of the tunnel.
Okay, um, and so of the eighteen thousand rough amount of applications we got in for households, they vetted five thousand, were there, well, they vetted more than five thousand, how many of those eighteen million were duplicates declines? Do you have that number?
So I know about a thousand were duplicates, meaning duplicate households, as you know, the, and that's one of the tough parts about the program. Per, um, the rules and regs, it's fourteen hundred per household, that per person, so that's, you know, that's something that we write up against an issue when it was coming out of our office to verify those duplicates. So as of right now, um, for the review that they have, and they do have, you know, the fif-, the, the five thousand is, is pretty much the finalized review. Um, they have a lot that prelim review is pretty much done as well, um, and from the, all of those numbers, it's about a thousand.
So what's the total amount with the five thousand that would have, will be deployed to the community? Like, the previous number plus these, cuz if I'm looking at the ten million, only about two thousand more households will qualify out of the eighteen thousand, and so what happens to the rest of the applicants? They just like, sorry, ran out of money, or is the mayor considering adding more to the, to the funds?
Yeah, so once we have the final numbers from them, we're gonna make that decision, we're aware that that's a decision that's gonna have to be made. But we're just waiting for them to give us the numbers kind of on their final review, so we can move ahead with that decision. But we definitely know it's a question that's out there, and we're trying to determine what we're gonna do with that.
And the reason that that question is hard for me, because there wasn't really a, a order of when it was received as to when the, um, households was awarded, because I know that I helped some folks with applications that put their applications in before others, and others received their check, and then these households didn't, so what would happen if we run out of money, but we had applicants in before other applicants, like, all that needs to be considered and discussed.
Definitely, and that, those are all things that are being considered, definitely.
Cuz that is something that I don't wanna have to deal with personally, and I know it's gonna come down the pipe.
Right, right.
Well, and they know when they put in, they actually had other people put in applications that got their checks before they did, so it's just like a whole, um, lot of things to consider.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, Counselor Hurst, you had a question for Lindsay real quick, before she jumped off?
What, I, I thought we had talked about the money being dis- dispersed at a third, a third, a third, right? Then we have like, haven't we had like, two or three thousand applicants that have already been approved and?
Yeah, those were the, those were the applications that were reviewed from our office before it went over to PPL. Those were the ones that were reviewed from our office.
So, so what's the timeline on dispersment? What, what is, in, in terms of getting it out? Yeah, I feel like the last meeting, we had said we would do, it would be something like a, I don't know, like, it would be split up into thirds, which would seem to me that folks would have already gotten something by now.
No, counselor, no, no funds have been dispersed from PPL as of right now. Like I mentioned, uh, Tim and I are gonna be reviewing the timeline in more detail with PPL tomorrow. So as of right now, I don't have a date for funding to go out. Um, but I hope to have a better understanding, hopefully, tomorrow.
All right, um, can you let us know after, after tomorrow, what that timeline looks like? Send us an email, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then, um, back to Tim's team, because I know Counselor Hurst had questions from them. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thanks so much.
Well, you gotta run. For Tim's team, we also asked for the decline applications. The amount of decline applications and the reasons why, because, and the reason that I'm asking for that is because we have gotten, um, folks, they actually sent pictures of their letters saying it was declined, but there was no reason. And so I don't know how folks can fix their applications if there wasn't given a reason as to why they were declined, so.
So, uh, Tim had to run to a meeting. Certainly, if there are folks that have been declined and they have questions, they should have contact information on their letter for who to contact, at least the letters that went out of our office. It, it tells you who is your contact person, and we can provide them information about why they were declined, and also certainly if they wanna see their score sheets, they can. And they also have the ability to appeal out of the programs being run over here, so.
Okay, um, and how's the appeals going? Are the, are the appeals included in the numbers that we just seen?
Yeah, no, they're not. Anyone who's been, anyone who's been awarded from the appeals to date, and this is just off the top of my head, counselor, we've received about forty-five appeals. What we do is we allow, if you're appealing, we allow you to submit any additional information. We also allow them a fifteen-minute Zoom where they can, um, add any additional information, tell us any, after seeing their score sheet, if they ask for anything more that they could add to the application. We also ask questions, and, um, I think to date, we've awarded approximately ten people, we've either awarded new awards, we've increased their awards, um, and we do have outstanding, and again, off the top of my head, maybe fifteen that we're reviewing, um, and waiting for additional information before we make the final decision. But they really supply something new above and beyond, um, the application, so that we can, um, we can make that decision.
How many more appeals do you have to go through out of the forty?
Out of the forty-five, I'd say, just in the last week, I think, from the new business, we've gotten three or four. Um, and I'd say we have fifteen that we're still waiting to make it, and that's again off the top of my head. Still waiting to make a decision on based on additional information they supported. So we try it once a month, we hear, we do the Zoom meeting appeals and we listen to. Um, you know, they give us any additional information.
Okay, um. So my 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 next question was going to be for Tim and it's it's around scheduling these meetings, because I want to attend. And I and I don't like the fact that if I say I'm on vacation or I'm going to be out of town, that is like overlooked and you guys still. Uh, well, not you guys, I'm going to say Tim still has the meetings anyway. It's like never taken into account, never taken into a consideration, and I definitely want to be there. I'm the only one on the. Um, ARPA overview oversight committee, oh, I'm sorry, operating advisory committee that. Is not staff of the administration. So I think that the only way we can get a real well-rounded. Um, viewpoint is for me to be there, and I think that's why um Council President Letterman assigned me to. The meetings, um, and so. I just wanted to reiterate that if I cannot be there, if we can look at different times. Because on the last meeting, I know it was only three people from the committee that was there, and that was TJ, Tim and Gladys, because Che was also. Um, out of town. And I just, I just think it's a real disadvantage to the community to have. Meetings without someone from the outside looking in, being able to attend, and I I keep expressing that concern. I have. Included my colleagues, I have asked over and over again for that consideration, and I still have not been given that consideration. So I just want to publicly go on the record and say, and maybe Tim can come back and listen to this. Um, this call for action or um this help, because. I need to be in the room, because even within some of the meetings that we had, there's information that you all don't know about the business and I. Give you that insight and you have like agreed to make changes on the award determination. And so that can't happen if I'm not there. Like one in in particular was Pamusa. Um, you guys go by the tax statement, but not all the work that they do in the community. Same thing happened with some um one of the boxing or wrestling um arenas, like. What they do for the community right now is invaluable, and the tax return is not going to tell that full story. So I'm just going to ask it again and I'm asking it publicly. So everyone knows that I am asking ahead of time to please take that into consideration. Um, Counselor Hirsch, I don't know if you finished your questioning, but I wanted to give you the opportunity if you didn't.
I just, I just want to know the um. How much is has been dispersed, which I, which I think I just expressed, and the only reason why I want to know that. Because I want to know whether businesses are having a difficult time actually. Uh, drawing down on that money, because they can't afford to pay for what it is that they need to pay for to draw down or show you all receipts. I just want to know. What that looks like. And then I guess my other question is, uh, or the other question I have is what is the timing? How long do they have to draw on that money?
So I think we. Sure, I can answer some of this. Um, I think we kind of addressed. The first part of your question at a previous meeting, but I'm happy to go over that again. Um, we're not requiring businesses to lay out everything in advance. That's. Well, that's how the contract is, but there is also the option for advanced payments. What has changed is we're just not automatically issuing fifty percent advanced payments. So we are still advancing businesses' payments, assuming that they can provide us some level of supporting documentation. For what it is they're going to do with that funding. I also want to clarify that on the contracts prior to them being. Prior to the program being transferred to our office, so there were some contracts that had come out of the finance office. Those were written for the fifty percent advanced payment, and that has not changed for those folks. We are not changing their contracts. It's for everyone that was awarded funding, once the programs were moved to development services. Um, but those folks can still get advanced payments, and they are. They just have to provide us some level of documentation about what the advanced payment is going to be utilized for. And then before they can get additional funds, they need to provide us the supporting documentation to show that the money was spent. In a way that is in accordance with the contract. And then they can get an additional payment.
Got it. Um, timeline, do they have a timeline?
So I would say it varies by applicant.
We haven't cut off anybody because they have.
Yeah, so the timeline in the contract, I believe, is twenty twenty-four. Um, the funding has to be fully allocated by the end of twenty twenty-four. And at this point, we haven't really had to do, at least for the folks that have been awarded out of our office. We haven't had to do extensions because that date is is kind of far out. Um, I know that the. Division of Technical Assistance and Compliance has had to do some time extensions. On there and for folks that they're dealing with that had been awarded prior to the. Kind of the programs moving over to our office.
Okay, thank you. All set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Letterman, I know that you had some questions you wanted to ask. I don't know if they were for Lindsay. But she only had a little bit of time, so I just wanted to um circle back to you as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think my questions are are more so related on the finance side, but I can wait until the next meeting or follow up. Uh, with Lindsay and TJ directly, I'd just say at this time that I thank you, Madam Chair, for your diligence. Uh, both as the council's representative on the. Uh, ARPA Advisory Committee, and certainly I hope that the administration. Uh, will be uh more careful in terms of scheduling those meetings uh to ensure that all the members. Of the ARPA Advisory Committee are able to attend. Um, you know, certainly being that the committee itself is advisory in nature. I think that, you know, for it to meet uh without its full complement. Uh, certainly degrades the level of advice uh that can be given. And so I I do hope that we're able to work out that scheduling challenge, and certainly also for your efforts on this committee. Uh, you know, when we, when I devised the the method by which I. Wanted to ensure proper oversight was done by the city council at the beginning of the year, I felt it important to make sure that not only. Uh, did the council have a a strong advocate on the ARPA Advisory Committee. Uh, who I knew would dedicate uh the time to do the work that needed to be done, but also that we had a public-facing component. In the form of this body, and I think it's, you know, it's relevant to note that the legislative oversight. Is essentially one of the most important responsibilities that the city council has, even in areas where we may not have. Uh, ultimate uh authority to dictate. Uh, we do have the authority to. Uh, get questions answered and make sure the information is coming to light. Um, and so I I think certainly this committee continues to carry that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Letterman. I'm glad I'm doing what you um envisioned when you formed these committees. Um, so I definitely appreciate you saying that. Um, Counselor Gobin?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you um to the finance team and to everyone here that um has been doing this hard work. Um, I guess I have two questions. So is it true, and I believe it is true, that you're not accepting any more applications, correct?
That is correct. The deadline for the business assistance and the nonprofit programs was December. And I believe the individual assistance was in January.
January, okay, thank you very much. And also, so I have two um businesses, one of them being my own. Um, listening with love that I have not had any um communication with. And then another one in Indian Orchard, um, Squeaky Clean, who most recently, I guess they got a denial letter. There, again, there was no explanation like Counselor Whitfield said earlier. Um, and I reached out to the team, I actually spoke to Brian, who said that um they. They could apply for an appeal, but I'm not sure if that was made clear in the letter that he got saying that they were denied. Um, so I think he did put the appeal in and. I'm not sure where he is in that process on that list that you guys um talked about. So those are the two two businesses that I'm thinking about.
Sure, so I don't know that we should, that it's appropriate for us to be discussing specific businesses and applications here. Um, but I'm happy to communicate. Uh, with your business, since you're you're the person, I'm happy to communicate as you're authorizing me to do that. We were waiting for your conflict of interest opinion um in order to move that forward. We've received that, and I think there's a determination that's ready to advance on that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the other business that you're speaking about, um, is it a new business?
It's not a new business. He's been in business for a very long time. Um, he put his application in. A while ago, and then he got denied, but again, he wasn't told why he was denied. So that's why he reached out to me and um I reached out to the team. I think you guys. For some reason, Brian Connors was involved, and he's the one, I think it was at that time when his business application was put in. So Brian did um send me back a notice saying that he could appeal. So I believe that um Sean, who's the owner, did appeal that process. So I just was wondering if he is on that list. Of business that you guys are still considering.
I will check that and certainly let you know and copy you on that.
I appreciate it.
Speaking to Brian Connors's involvement, again, we've tried to, once things moved over here. Have a contact staff person for each program. So that when folks are getting letters and communications from us, they have a person that they're supposed to contact. So it's kind of spread out across the different staff folks in the office, so it's not just one person taking a barrage of phone calls.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And again, um, the dispersment process, I think Counselor Hirsch um. Alluded to this, you know, it seems like it's very convoluted, and I know that when we deal with government contracts and the federal government and HUD. Um, you know, we're dealing with that, the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, and it's a very cumbersome, so you know. People who may be used to doing this are probably able to go through that process rather quickly, but I think small businesses, um, small nonprofits. Don't have the capacity to do that, so I'm really glad that you guys are providing that support, because I see it. At on the council, at the citizens' council, um, that you guys do provide the support. It's kind of like, you know. Taking a baby and blocking them, holding their hands to it. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. And uh, Madam Chair, I think that you're doing an amazing job on this committee too. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
You, I want to respond to that. I want to say that our staff has been working very hard. To try and be responsive to applicants' needs and awardees' needs, including going out to businesses on a regular basis. Having them in here, having the ability for them to walk in as needed and not having to always make appointments. We're also offering free notary services to these folks so that they're not paying for those types of things.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job, I tell, I tell you. This is a big project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Counselor Gobin. I do want to echo those sentiments. It's a lot of hard work. And I know you don't always get the praise that you deserve, but definitely want to give you your flowers right now, because I know you all are working very hard. To do the best that you can under the guidelines that you have. Um, and it's just hard decision-making sometimes. But I do want to just pivot a little bit to outdoor dining. I want to know if any of those funds have been dispersed.
No, they have not been dispersed. I think we have um some contracts.
I think there are some contracts that might be close to ready to go, but I don't know that they've gotten a final review at this point.
Yeah, they haven't gotten a final review, so they have not been sent to over City Hall to go through the signature room. But there are a couple that are ready for Tina and I to review.
And then I had asked a while ago for the guidelines on uh for ARPA federal guidelines on what constitutes a small business. And I never got that answer. Tim said he was going to get it out of the um, the language, because I looked for the language myself.
Um, yeah, the small business, uh, the SBA reg is, it's, it's very convoluted. Um, but I will remind him to try to get that over to you.
Um, Jerry, would you know, because you work a lot with different housing and HUD. Um, I don't know, I know it's different than small business, but. Do you have an idea?
Uh, it is, so yes, I'm actually the one that looked at the small business reg and said, oh, God, this is complicated.
So, I mean, the most general, the easiest understanding was that like. The business has to have less than five hundred employees. That was sort of the the biggest, easiest part, but then as you get into it, there's a lot more there.
Less than five hundred?
Part, it depends on industry, what type of industry, there's a whole chart they have, and then that has to do with numbers of employees and. Um, the uh revenue that the business takes in, yeah.
Share the chart, that that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah, we can, we can get you the link to the reg, certainly.
That'd be nice, in the chart, the chart's in there to take a look.
And and I will say there have been some businesses where we have had to have. Outside legal counsel weigh in on their eligibility or not.
Okay, and so then I I took a ride, because I just wanted to know how folks are going to. Expand, and so I took a ride to some of the businesses and kind of like looked up their plot lines and stuff like that. And I I just can't see how they will expand their outdoor dining, like one pizza shop had like two. Um, tables out there over in um Alpha Island Pond Road over in that area. And 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 I didn't see no way that they can expand outdoor dining, so I'm just like. How how is this going to happen? Are we going to be blocking off more streets like we did for the fort? Um, even like City Line Cafe, I went over there and I'm like, how how are we expanding some of these places? Because I.
I would think, I, my assumption is, so Brian's kind of more intimately working with outdoor dining. But I think before anyone goes to contract, they're going to have to provide some level of plan. And they're going to have to get whatever necessary approvals they need to get in order to do that. Um, but I think if you have questions about specific businesses, Brian's probably the best person for you to reach out to. Um, and he can, I will probably try to get you as best an answer as he can. Um, or we filter that through Tim with Brian copied.
And I'm I'm going to tell you guys, I'm not going around like trying to be hard on these people. But when the constituents see the names that come out publicly in the press releases and on the news and in the newspaper, they're like. And then they didn't get approved, it becomes like a whole big thing, and they're like, they don't even have the room, you should go by there. So I'm like, okay, I'll go by there, because I don't really know every business, what their structures are and things like that. Um, and there's another. Location, I think over on Liberty Street, that they say don't don't even have a kitchen, so how are they expanding outdoor dining? I can't. Quite remember the name. Um, so I'm just, so these are the things that other constituents see. And they're like, it just doesn't seem right, so that's why I'm asking you all the questions. So what I'll do is as those concerns come in. I will, um, I'm still going to go look, take pictures, and I'll try to give you guys as much detail or information that I get. Um, because I'm not, it's not Tracy Whitfield picking on anybody, but if I have to hear these things over and over and over again. You know, we have to create some awareness around it, so. Um, and then my final question about outdoor dining, and I think I asked it before. Because when I read the application, it said there would be no franchises yet, Uno's got an outdoor dining contract, and so did Hilton, I think.
Yep, and I I thought that the, the reasoning there was that they qualified as small businesses. Versus that they were locally owned versus franchises, but I think Tim. Uh, Tim would probably need to speak to that and Brian um better than I could.
There could be a lot of locally, franchises are normally locally owned. They're franchised, but they're owned by someone locally. Normally, that's how franchises work that I know of.
Right, and and so I will say I don't have the language in front of me, and I think Tim's probably the best person for you to communicate this too.
Okay, so I'll send him an email on that, because that is something else that I keep hearing. It is specifically said, and I read it myself just to make sure that there will be no franchises yet, two. Um, came through the pipe, and one of the two actually have gotten awarded through um the Springfield Thunderbirds. Got awarded through the the Marriott, um, just like keep getting these awards, so you know. People do their research, that does come up. I do my research, and so it's like this particular owner is getting. Almost like two million dollars out of ARPA, doesn't live locally in Springfield. And while Springfield residents use their establishments and things like that. I don't think they really struggled as much as some of the locally owned small businesses that could have really, really used ARPA funds. Um, just to keep their doors open, and I know quite a few that had to close and were not awarded. And so I think when we consider everything, we should look at all that. If you're running a big establishment like that, you probably got other resources that you can um funnel into your business and not have to take away. From the local community funding that should have really, really went out to the local community, small, small business owners. That struggle right now, closing their doors right now to keep their doors open, and I'm going to keep reiterating that over and over again, because it's just not. A real fair process to me in my eyes. Um, I know you guys have guidelines to cover and you did what you had to do per those guidelines. But we have to sometimes look out of the guidelines, beyond the guidelines, and look at the human experience of people who've been around for a long time and had to close their doors, because they just couldn't afford it, and we could have helped them. We could have helped them stay open. So now they're going to other communities and opening businesses elsewhere. And we could have been growing our own economic um vitality in the city of Springfield. So I just wanna uh reiterate that, and then I'll open up to the counselors to see if you have any last comments.
Uh, Counselor, if I could just speak to the one point that you made about folks having concerns, not understanding why they were denied. I think that if folks don't understand that, we would really urge counselors to encourage them to contact the contact person in their letter, so we can give them more information if they would like that.
Definitely. I think it was those letters before you guys, though. Those are the ones that I was seeing the most that didn't have the like contact information. No phone number, no email, no contact person. So now that they started hearing about the appeals process, they're coming forward with their letter saying, oh, we didn't get any of this type of level of service before, so how do we, how do we make it fair for them? Like, you know, their appeals could be over, but they didn't even know there was an appeal.
So like, folks submit appeals.
It's not too late?
Yes, no, it's not. No, anyone who's had to deny a letter can still submit an appeal, because they didn't have them set up before. So just have them, they have to submit their appeal to uh ARPA Appeals um email address.
Or drop it off in person.
Or drop it off in person, yeah.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if there was like a thirty-day window. Um, okay, so that's, that's good.
To be fair, we're just trying to take it from anyone. We're not holding people.
I mean, eh, and they, and we have the appeals here in, once a month. So it does, they have to be patient, but we'll acknowledge the receipt of theirs, and we will schedule them, and we will hear it. So anyone who's got a denial has the abil- ability to appeal.
And it's appeals, ARPA appeals?
Yeah, we can send you that email address.
Okay, all right. Well, perfect, good. That's good to know. Um, any other comments from counselors?
Uh, yeah, Tracy?
Yep.
Hi, uh, how you doing? Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I've attended two or three of these meetings recently. Haven't had much to say, but I, I do appreciate the information and the exchange. And uh appreciate the work that's being done. I know it's coming down the hump stretch, I hope. But uh anyway, thanks to everybody for your efforts.
Yes, thank you. Um, anyone else have any final comments? Well, I'm glad to see so many counselors in attendance today. That was a wonderful sight. And um, um, to the economic development team, keep up the good work. I know you guys are looking at a lot of this, and these aren't your only programs. So, I know it's difficult and time-consuming. So definitely, I know you got CDVG and all the other housing programs and just a lot of other things going on. And ARPA's not the only thing, even though sometimes I make it seem like it's the only thing that's happening in the world. Um, just definitely appreciate you and all the programs that you do um get out to the community, so thank you on that.
Thank you.
All right, guys, this meeting is adjourned, and have a great week.
Thank you, thank you.